I asked him if I could bring it around because I want to be able to talk to you as well as address the panel that's up here. And I'm not comfortable being up front. I'm sorry. My name, thank you. My name is Amy Balla and I live here in Garfield County, 25 miles north of town is our residence.
Excuse me, there's a background noise from the heat. Is that, can people hear her okay or can you hear that background noise? Okay, if you can hear her, go ahead.
Takes an engineer to figure out how to do that. I'm sorry. I'm not comfortable being up here. I do education with little kids, so I feel more comfortable with that. And I talk with my hands and so that's why I asked him if he would please bring the stand up here. I guess I just want to start out by saying tomorrow's Veterans Day and we're meeting here in the American Legion Club. And I'm really thankful for the freedom we do have to discuss things like this and to speak out openly. And I thank each of you for coming today. My God who made the hills reminds me that nothing comes into my life but that it comes through His hand first. And He reminds me that there will be a day of accountability for decisions we make. And He reminds me that all I can do now is just stand and speak the truth. I'm speaking in love and kindness. And so I mean no disrespect to any of these people that are on this staff or to any of you if you disagree with my opinions. I just do feel very passionately about our sand hills and that's where a lot of my comments are going to come from. We have, you know, most of us, well, if you speak up here at least, we'll tell where you are from and what your name is. And we know the names of these men. I just wondered if I could ask you all to tell us where your residence is, where you live. I guess I could start with you, Mr. Silva.
Yeah. I grew up in Missouri and I'm president of the state of California.
I live in the beautiful mountains of North Georgia.
I live in Lincoln, Nebraska.
I am a lifelong resident of Nebraska except for the four years I left my, this state to serve in the United States Navy. I grew up in the northeast part of the state, but I have lived all over the state and I currently reside in Columbus.
I'm a resident of Lancaster County. That may be the last question I'll answer because I am a neutral, but in any event.
I live in Columbus, Nebraska.
I'm an aide of Idaho and I live in Boise.
I live in Orlando, Florida.
I live in Columbus, Nebraska.
Thank you. I know that one of the comments that Brewster was, a gentleman asked if they understood the sand hills lifestyle. And I, I kind of had to have a little bit of sadness for the group because I'm not sure any of them ever have lived in the sand hills enough to know what we mean when we say the sand hills lifestyle. My thoughts are so random, so excuse me if I go back and forth a little bit. The decision, in 2011, there was a group called the Nebraska Transmission Advocacy Group. And they really pushed for a project that would get transmission lines into the area that they needed in Cherry County. I talked to an attorney that represented, one of the attorneys that represented some of the Cherry County landowners up there. And so I've listened to that a little bit. And at the time, SPP looked at their big giant grid like you saw the map. And they said, well, you know, it would be great to have transmission up in that area. And so the plan was to go to Cherry County and then go across and they could connect in over to the WAPA line and they could get their loop going. And when I asked why that didn't go to Cherry County, the attorney did not know why. And he said that the Cherry County wind farmers especially were disappointed in that. And I wondered if you could tell me, anyone on the staff, why we did not go clear into Cherry County?
Well, I will just answer it at a high level and Randy, who's a person from our Transmission Planning Group, can offer some more details. It basically boils down to the need to interconnect at Thedford, Nebraska with the substation there to support the reliability of the Zone 5 area that Randy talked about. That area of the state, we had a very difficult time in 2012 getting the electricity in the state, into that area because of limitations on the transmission system. That said, Thedford became the best location both from a, from a operational standpoint, a need standpoint, and a cost standpoint. Randy, if you want to add anymore.
Okay, here I go jumping around a little again. At the same 2011 meeting that they had down in Arkansas, that's the headquarters, Little Rock, Arkansas, for the Southwest Power Pool, they presented several plans. One of them was called the R Plan because it looked like a little R and now it's called R Project with a capital R. And they also talked about a T Plan. And that plan would go from Thedford on west and cut across the rest of our sand hills. At the bottom of the slide that they presented, it does say that the subject of discussion would be for another time to be drafted in 2013. When you look at 2013, government subsidies had dropped for wind energy. And so I believe that that's why they said, you know, that's not as important right now. And if you go ahead and look at what they did decide to go ahead and do, there, and correct me, please, if I'm, if I'm misreading this because I am not a transmission person. I learned more about RTOs and SPP and WAPA and shale plays and North Dakota oil than I ever thought I'd ever know. So I've, I've really learned a lot, but it hasn't always made me real happy. But the, the map that they will show now, instead of going west, they will go from the WAPA line and extend east towards, the town was called Hazelton, I think that's Iowa. So that's, that's just a preliminary plan. I'm not saying that's what they're doing. But when those plans are out there, you and I both know that that's in the, in the water, we might say, or in the wind, maybe is a better way to say it if we're talking about wind energy. So that's just something I want the public to, to be aware of. An asset is something that's valuable and appreciated. Our Nebraska sand hills are the only ecosystem like this in the western hemisphere, I would say in the whole world. I did find, I think there's a place in Africa somewhere that maybe is similar. Ours are different because of the fragility of the soil and because of the water beneath it. And so we have a treasure here that is like nowhere else. I think others can speak even more than I can about the Great Plains. Our land is being chopped up again and again and again and again and again. And there are very few places where we have an intact region like we do in the sand hills. And I feel passionately that this is something we need to protect. I'm not just speaking as someone who has it going across, no matter which corridor they go through, they were going across us. I'm not speaking from that right now. I'm saying this is our Nebraska sand hills. When, when the Nebraska Transmission Advocacy Group met in Little Rock, Arkansas, we had one representative from Nebraska. I'm not sure who that was. Could you answer that for me?
Okay, I had to get the microphone.
That's all right.
I didn't participate in any meeting in Little Rock, Arkansas, so I can't answer that question. I can tell you that there was a meeting with that advocacy group in Lincoln, Nebraska that had lots of Nebraskans added. I can't name them all now, it's been too long ago, as well as representatives of the Southwest Power Pool.
Okay. Well, there was one, one Nebraskan and we'll just leave it at that. But I don't think that was a very good representative of Nebraska. And I want to say shame on that Nebraskan for not sticking up for those Nebraska sand hills. I don't know if you know, they've talked a little bit about quasi-government because that's what they have, the authority then to use eminent domain if they want to cross your ground. I looked up quasi-government because again, I'm learning a lot about this. And quasi-government is, in a dictionary online anyway, it said it's supported by the government but managed privately. The truth is that quasi-government virtually by its name alone and the intentional blurring of its boundaries is not definable in any particular way. And that is somewhat of the reason why we're here today because we're kind of at a loss for sure how we can change anything. Because, you know, they can use that government card if they want to. And government can't go against itself. And so any entity that is quasi-government or government can't stand up against them, even if they are disappointed in the decisions. I have another article. This is from the State Game and Parks Agency. As previously mentioned, the Nebraska Game and Parks, I don't want to say agency, Commission Staff expressed concern regarding this project's placement through the sand hills. However, we do not have regulatory authority when it comes to protecting the sand hills. Consequently, there's not a mechanism for us to prevent the project from going through this landscape. As we do with all projects, we recommend construction along, constructing along existing corridors or in areas with existing disturbance. We have worked with the MPPD to develop measures to avoid and minimize impacts to listed species, to the extent possible, it says. Again, I think that's an entity, because they love nature and they love the wildlife and they love the land, they would prefer that MPPD would go through existing corridors, but they can't stand up against them. When we were talking about the incidental take. I must have skipped a page somewhere. Who was talking about that?
I mentioned it in my introduction.
Okay, thank you. We were talking about the incidental take and it said we would compensate for the incidental take. And I was curious, what does compensate mean?
I don't know that I can answer that. I'm going to give that to Mr. Larry Linder from our Environmental Department who's more intimately involved in that process.
For an incidental take permit.
Larry, we need a microphone for you.
For an incidental, for an incidental take permit, the way that process works.
You need to turn it on.
There?
Is that on?
Yeah. Incidental, incidental take permit is issued by the Fish and Wildlife Service. And part of that is looking at, in this case, the ABB. And so we'll look at habitats, we'll look at.
Put it right up to your mouth, please, Mr. Linder.
Does that work better? So we'll work with Fish and Wildlife Service to do this incidental take permit. As part of that, you look at where you're going to be and the potential impacts on ABB. And then you look at the habitat you may or may not impact. And it could be permanent impact or temporary impact. Once you identify those impacts, then you look at our ways to, first you try to avoid where you can. If there are certain areas we can avoid, we try to. If there's areas, once you're in an area, if you can minimize your impact, maybe construction techniques, maybe other things like that. You know, for a lot of species, it's actually time of year when you do work, you can minimize your impact. And at the end of the day, under that, they have to do, they call it a compensation, but it's really a mitigation. That could be acres preserved, it could be funding for the projects to preserve habitat. That's all part of the process and that we're not, we're just getting into that process now. So we've got about two years of that to go yet. But that's how that process works.
Okay, thank you. My personal comment is just funding for further studies sounds like it goes to a slush fund to the Fish and Wildlife or Nebraska Game or somebody, but that's, that's my personal When you say that you consider the public comments like what we're giving today, how do you go about evaluating those? Do you read, like, do all of you read them or is there one person that reads them? Or do you, and I know you have your charts, your bar graphs that show this, this is what we think was the most important issue and all these people, but how, who finally kind of does that summary? Do you have a special department for that?
That's the role of the project team. And the project team will sit down over the next 30 days and you see a lot of the team members in the front of the room and the back of the room. And they'll go through the comments and evaluate them and then make any, if needed, any recommended changes as a result of that.
Another comment I see I have down was, we were talking about storm damage, that if we have this route, that way it'll really help us if we have storm damage. So does that mean that the first ice storm we have, I'll notice a big change because I have a 345 kilovolt line going north of my house that when I have that storm damage, that'll help me out faster?
The, this particular line is going a route that goes further north, which you saw, and then to the east and interconnects with the rest of the network. And this is an integrated transmission grid. This, I use an example, the ice storm of 2006, 2007 mainly hit the central part of the state and went up into the northeast part of the state a little bit in the Elgin and Neely area. It pretty much cut our transmission system in half. Not quite completely in half, but mostly in half because most of our existing transmission runs down through that central corridor across the central part of the state. Given a similar ice storm, and if you look back in the history, most of the ice storms in Nebraska hit that central and eastern part of the state, this line's in a different route. So whether it's an ice storm or a tornado or something else, diversity in terms of where the facilities are physically located is an advantage.
I, I'm just saying this personally again, but I think that because this is such a high voltage transmission line, it's going to go across my property. I'm going to carry it, but I don't think it's going to, I'm not thinking I'm going to see any difference in my energy. It's not making more power and it's not going to be broke down to come to me any quicker than they could get out and just fix the line that's on me. So, you know, I think that's a, kind of almost a moot point to say that it's going to improve our, you know, it's going to make our life better up here because we have this big line. I don't know if that's really, really what the.
Actually, let me, let me go back to that a little bit because there's a little misunderstanding and it's hard to explain without a map in front of me. But that line interconnects with 115,000 volt line that circles that area, which we are in the middle of today, okay? That 115,000 volt line interconnects with the lines that Howard Greeley, Loop Valley's, Custer and other wholesale power districts in the state use. That energy that comes from our power plants flows across that network, down to their lines and down to your house. So there will be a reliability improvement to the electricity that gets to your home.
But when my line breaks, we have a great local company, Loop Valley World Public Power, and they'll be out there and fix it right away. And I don't think that it's going to depend on whether that voltage is there, will it?
They, they are a great company and they will come out as soon as weather allows to fix their facilities. But in, I'll use the ice storm of 2006, 2007 again, it takes all the facilities being in service. That ice storm was massive and widespread and took down everybody's facilities. So if they got their lines up before our lines got up, you didn't get electricity. If we got our lines up before their lines got up, you didn't get electricity. Everything has to be put back in service in order to make that happen.
But aren't you talking about if that 345 goes down, is what you're telling me?
Any.
I'm talking about just my little, one little.
I agree. But my point is, is they're interrelated and they're interconnected. And the whole system has to work together in order for electricity to get from a power plant to your house. So you can't think of them separately. They're part of an integrated, integrated system.
Mr. Kent and I have a lot of good discussions, so don't mind us if we go back and forth a little here. That brought up another, okay, the load study that we're in Zone 5. That load study was really stressed because of the drought, as he said, because corn prices all of a sudden were really high because of ethanol, because a lot of fields were put into production that hadn't been put into production. And it happened to be a bad year to start with the drought. And therefore we, they had a lot of load on the line. Whoops, I understand that. If you look at a map that tells, this was central Nebraska area voltage collapses. Though this is Ainsworth, Stewart, Atkins, Emmett, O'Neil, this is just a little area. It's north of us by quite a ways. It's actually closer to where we were suggesting that they take this route. If they would stay in existing corridors, continue from Thedford, if they have to have the Thedford station, substation, continue on north, follow their existing corridor, come around, they would be closer to the wind energy potential, they would be closer to the, where the pivots are. We don't have pivots in our, in our area where this line is going across. So when they start telling me and pointing at the map going, you guys, this is where you're out of power, I always tell them, quit pointing at the map there because that's not where it was. So I just think that's, you know, another thing that needs to be considered. They avoided the bugs in the wet, in the northern area. They avoided the wetlands up there. We live in the wetlands where we have flowing wells that are at the headwaters of the Cedar Creek, which, you know, it's a little Cedar Creek, then the big Cedar Creek, and then it goes on down to the Loop River. I, I have had this discussion with the wetland specialist, but they haven't been on our ground. And I think it's interesting that they'll avoid bugs and wetlands without being on our ground. And they won't avoid the people that are on our ground. And there's more roads up where the bugs and wetlands were. So that's just another thing I'm just mentioning on the record. I think it's kind of creepy to know that they have all these air photos that they zoom in on us. But I've gotten in the habit now and I'm kind of feeling disgruntled of just looking up and waving. So I'm hoping one of these days I'll be on the map for one of those. Talking a little bit, I think Clint, this is going to go more towards your expertise. And Clint is very knowledgeable in engineering. I'm not, but he's very patient, has explained a lot to me in the previous open houses. EMFs, electrical magnetic fields, I learned that. And I understand that the 345s do put off a fair amount of electrical magnetic frequent fields, whatever, I just told you, I forgot already. But you have triangle shaped things on the poles that are supposed to help limit that EMF, but that's not on the lattice towers. Is there a reason for that?
I can let Mr. Silva speak more to the, to the EMF part of it. But, but the reason that we are, have a different configuration for the, the tubular steel poles compared to the lattice. The lattice is typically going to be built so we can keep it as short as possible, you know, two levels of wires as opposed to five or four that the steel poles have. So on the steel poles, you know, if we wanted to keep them all straight up, then we'd be taller. So that's why we kept them as a delta configuration. So Mike, can you speak to the EMF?
Are you, you talking about the difference in the levels because of the way the wires are configured?
I, I think if I understood right, the little delta shaped triangle configuration of the, of the wire or the conductors, that that helped reduce the amount of shedding of that electrical magnetic field, is that correct? Made them safer, so to speak?
I wouldn't say that. The fields are a little bit lower because the wires are arranged in that triangular configuration, a phase.
When you say fields are lower, you don't mean lower to the ground, you mean lower levels?
The levels are maybe 15 or 20 percent less because the wires were arranged in a triangular configuration versus a flat configuration.
Okay. There will still be some shedding of this electromagnetic field. So do gates and things like that need to be grounded?
I'm sorry.
Can we get shocked touching wires and fences and gates?
Oh, gates. As part of the construction, and I meant to leave that from someone from the district of construction, but it's normal during construction to ground fences that are on the right of way, fences and gates.
Yuck. I noticed that there's a lot of pictures of how we're going to construct this, but there aren't really any pictures in the sand hills. And I, I know we've put up our, if I understand right, our family, the Ballas, were some of the early ones that put in electricity when we needed electricity. And it probably wasn't super popular at first because, you know, who wants poles in your backyard? But we knew that that would benefit each one of our neighbors and we worked together and we're sure glad that we have it. This, you know, could be a project considered similar to that. They would claim that it's for the general good of the general public and that, you know, we should sacrifice and give it up and do the right thing. I would say that there's a lot of questions still out there whether it really, the, I was asked on NTV, so if you see me tonight, I apologize because I, like, again, I don't speak in front of people, I'm sorry. But they asked me if I could say that there was a need. Did I agree there's a need? And I said, I've tried to be, put myself in these people's shoes and think about it. And I thought if I was a transmission person and I was trying to get, you know, reliable electricity and I was having brownouts and, well, there probably is a need. But I cannot for the life of me figure out how there's a need to come through the sand hills. When we think about that being the most valuable, precious thing we have in the state, it might cost us a little bit more to go around financially. I, I think it would be worth any price to save our sand hills because someday we're going to look out there and they won't be there and we can't go back. They can't do this project, you know, there's a lot of things they can't do yet. They can't tell you how they're going to do it for sure because they haven't been there yet. But they're going to do it. I would just like to ask, I should stop and if I'm, if someone else is wanting me to quit, just jump up and I'll speak again later. But could you tell me why there is such a need to go through the sand hills?
Well, it goes back to the need for the project, okay, which is to improve reliability. We talked about the need to have that interconnection at Thedford, all right? So we have to get north, at least that far. To reduce congestion, connect all the way around so we have that other big link in our network that allows us to use the resources more effectively to serve you all. And to enable the development of renewable resources. This area of the state is a very wind rich area, so if sometime in the future, that's determined as where we want to go from a utility standpoint or a developer standpoint, you're going to need the transmission access to do that. Why not go further north? It boils down to impact. Again, we're trying to balance what's needed to get this project completed to meet the needs of the project while minimizing impact. More miles is more impact. More landowners impacted, more, more potential for environmental impacts, more costs. So we're trying to find that balance point between need, benefit, and impact to get the project done.
There's going to be extra expense to put the towers, the type of towers, those lattice towers that are needed for the unique problems stabilizing them in sand and water. There's going to be extra expense, I think they're going to need more than four towers in areas where the hills are really steep and rough. I think there's going to be extra expense in restoration if they go along existing corridors. They, there's, there's not the access, road access in the area that they're proposing. If they go along existing corridors, that's already been leveled and flattened and it's there. They don't, they do not own enough, if I'm understanding this right, they do not own enough easement. They only own like 100 or something feet instead of the 200. So they would still have to negotiate, but the terrain is already laid out there. They're going to, there will be extra expense of construction and maintenance in our remote grasslands. They talk about low pressure something machines. On our property, the way they decided to go right now, the proposed route goes across a wet meadow. Once you press that ground down, it doesn't matter how low maintenance or low pressure it is, you can't fluff it up. It's not like farm ground that you go back in and drill and come back up with it. So that's a little bit of a problem. I'm not sure that they've figured out how to mitigate or compensate. There'll be extra expense for emergency repairs, you know, like they said, if, if we have an ice storm and Loop Valley has to come out and fix something, it's pretty rough for them to do it. And they're just talking about a little line. If that big line goes down, that's not going to be easy in some of our storm, the things that come after a storm. If any accidents happen, my sister was an EMT at Thedford and she had to take a power person that was thrown from a pole and it didn't go up quite like they thought. And it was a pretty serious injury. And they thought they were a long ways from the hospital. Just imagine what it would be like if they were out in our hills. If a fire would start, some of that area is so remote in the hills that you wouldn't see it till it got going enough that you had a good smoke. And you know how hard it is to fight fire in the hills. And I'm not sure that, you know, that's something we really want to see happen. Mr. Byerman, oh, I, oh, excuse me, one other thing before I ask that question, Mr. Byerman, sorry. I have a doctor named Byerman, so I always want to say the wrong name, I apologize. I think this maybe went back to, well, I can go to any of you, I guess. We talk a lot about how we've got to have our separation so we have reliability in our lines. There's one slide and I just, you saw me turn around looking because it was a picture, but I don't see it here right now. It might be back there, I'm not sure. But there's one slide they showed, it was right when they were talking about, I wrote that down, don't can't find it, so I won't take your time. But it shows at the bottom of the picture, it was a Southwest Power Pool picture, but it showed two big voltage lines running side by side to each other. And I just had to chuckle because they don't like to do that, but it is possible. Mr. Byerman, you were talking about taking soil samples. How deep do those soil samples go?
Typically, typically for soil samples, we'll go anywhere from 30 to 50 feet for the tangents and as, as deep as 70 feet for the dead ends.
And again, I think, I think this was one of Mr. Byerman's statements that be, you know, we, we want to work together before a whole route is fully designed. And I think that's why we're here today. It would not be impossible for MPPD to say, whoa, you know, we don't live in the sand hills. They have degrees that go on forever and ever, you know, the, all the education they have. And I'm, I'm very respectful of that. I think they have educated themselves well. I thought it was curious as I was sitting here thinking Nebraska was, became a state in 1867.
You were supposed to ask him that question.
Oh, I was supposed to ask him. Our, our homestead was homestead in 1885. So if you think about the fact that we've had that experience for over 100 years, almost as long as Nebraska's been a state. as long as Nebraska's been a state, I think, and, and we're not the only ones, this route happens to cross homestead after homestead after historic homestead. And those people received that ground, they came and they, a lot of them were tree claims, some of them are the Kincaid Act, but they came and they fought off grasshoppers, and they fought off drought, they fought off floods, they fought off fire. They have managed to fight cattle prices that go up and down in every which way, they fought off investors, they, they, it's been a hard time, but those homesteads have managed to keep it together. And to have this route come along and just say, "Well, sorry, now you give it up, you can't pass it on to your next generation because we have a better idea," I think that is tragic. And I'm not sure that this, that's up again a place, I'm not sure there's a need, I think it could go somewhere else. I have some more questions that I would like to ask later, but I'd like to sit down and let some other people do some talking, so if that's all right, I'll come back. Judge, is that all right?
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for this. Oh, excuse me, excuse me, I got one more thing. I will read this in right now, because I don't want to miss it. On the front of this little flyer, it says, "Save the Sand Hills," and I would like this recorded in the, for sure in the court recording, because I am going to hand it out. "We are a group of concerned landowners who have organized to protect our sand hills and our property. We have attached a petition that is calling MPPD to locate the R Project along existing corridors to reduce the impact and further degradation of the sand hills in Nebraska. These petitions will be gathered and presented to MPPD. Please fill them out and mail them to the, mail the attached petition to, and we, we have our address listed on here. This is from the Save the Sand Hills group, but I'm willing to take them at my house, so the address is listed as Lynn and Amy Balla, 84385, 474th Avenue, Burwell, Nebraska, 68823. You can contact us at 308-348-2244, or savethesandhills@gmail.com. And please visit also on Facebook.com/Save the Sand Hills." And the petition just says that we're, that MPPD is currently planning on routing future high-voltage lines through a new route in the sand hills of Nebraska. "The Nebraska sand hills are one of the most delicate ecosystems on the planet. We are calling on the Nebraska Public Power District to locate the new power lines along existing corridors to reduce the impact and prevent further degradation of the sand hills in Nebraska. Help protect Nebraska's family farms, ranches, wildlife habitats, and soil. Let Nebraska Public Power District know that Nebraskans support smart decisions in locating new power lines that reduce the environmental impact. Then we ask you to print your name, and put your address, so that they know that we're a real person, and then sign it, and then you can, like I said, return it either to me today, and we'll be passing these out. Thank you."
You youngsters must not have a high frequency. Can you, can you shut the heat?
No, no, the petition.
Oh, the petition, okay. Please hold that until the end of the meeting, because that'll slow things down. Thank you. Is there anybody else here in the second row on the right that wants to? Over here, yes, get up. Right here.